Community Health Hub. And we'll all be explaining to you in a few minutes, I expect. I now introduce Cindy Bratt, who is the Chair of the Hub Committee, who will come forward and make a presentation and introduce the committee. And I want to advise you, please advise you, that this committee has been working extremely hard and long the last few months to prepare the information that is on this hub. With her is Counselor Carly, of course, who is a member of the committee. So Cindy, I am very, I'll be pleased to turn it over to you in a minute.
Okay, sweet.
Approval of the agenda. You can see it's a single item. Thank you, Counselor Coleman, thank my Counselor Pierce. All in favor? All opposed? Declaration of pecuniary interest by any member of council present? None at this time. And the main event, of course, is the delegation, the Community Health Hub Committee Chair, Cindy Bratt, who is now making the presentation. So welcome.
Thank you.
To you and your committee. And I understand you'll introduce some. Thank you.
It will, thank you.
Is that on?
I think it's on. Everybody can hear me okay?
A little louder, I think.
A little louder?
Just a bit.
Okay.
Yes, speak right in.
I'll get a little closer.
And we'll catch every word.
Okay. So I'm doing two things at the same time up here tonight. I'm working my PowerPoint presentation and speaking, so could be a bit of a challenge. Good evening, Mayor Eddy and council members. My name is Cindy Bratt and I'm the Executive Director for Community, sorry, Primicare Community Family Health Team in Paris. I am also the chairperson of the recently formed Community Health Hub Task Force here before you this evening. The Community Health Hub Task Force is a group of healthcare service organizations from both Branford and Paris who provide a variety of health services to members of your communities and constituencies throughout the county of Brant. Mayor Eddy has asked me to introduce my committee, so I'll take the opportunity to do this now. You know who I am. We have Dr. John McDonald, Lead Physician from Primicare Family Health Team, Mr. Steve Ferentz, Board Treasurer, Primicare Family Health Team Board, Don Cardy, Board Member, Primicare and Counselor, Mr. Jim Hornell, President, Brant Community Healthcare System, Lena Rinaldi, COO and Chief Nursing Officer of the Brant Community Healthcare System, and Lena's not here this evening, Gene Kincaid, Vice Chair, Board, BCHS, thank you, Dr. Malcolm Locke, Medical Officer of Health, Brant County Health Unit, and Mr. Locke is there, Dr. Locke is not with us this evening. We have Peter Zoda, Executive Director, Grand River CHC, Katie Gasparelli, Program Manager, Six Nations, Lori Davis Hill, Director of Health Services, Six Nations, Mayor Ron Eddy, County of Brant, and Dave Levack, MPP Brant, and also Marilyn McCulloch, our VIP community In addition to local healthcare organizations, we also have Six Nations, as mentioned, a local community member, and members of our local government at our table guiding and informing us. From our membership, you can see that we have key players and decision makers at our table who have come together for the betterment of health services in the county of Brant. Partnerships are how we are going to bring this vision to life. Key players in our health community coming together, planning together, supporting each other, all to provide the county of Brant with the best healthcare services we can envision. This task force has been meeting on a regular basis since May of this year to determine not only how to preserve healthcare services in the community of Paris, but how to enhance these services, provide further services, and increase accessibility for Brant County community members. We are before you today to share our goals and visions of the future of healthcare in Paris, the most populous and growing community within Brant County, which also will positively impact all constituents throughout our local communities such as Burford, Harley, Glenmorris, Scotland, Oakland, and St. George. Our vision is of a community health hub in Paris, a health hub not only for medical care, but a hub that addresses the social determinants of health. That enables the members of our communities to have a central location where they can go for primary medical care, urgent medical care, social service resources, recreation, local club meetings, support groups, affordable daycare. The possibilities are endless. In keeping with our provincial government's mandates for broadening access to these types of services across communities, as outlined in Bill 41, we will create partnerships with local agencies, businesses, and community groups across all of our communities in the county of Brant. The most solid partnerships and champions of this community hub are before you today. To date, we have had 20 very positive responses to our request for expression of interest. All of them are excellent potential partners. So Paris is currently undergoing an unprecedented growth in population and is forecasted to do so over the next 15 years. There will be huge demands placed upon the community health services, and in fact, has already been evidenced in the family health team physician offices, with calls from new citizens looking for a family doctor. It has begun. Thank you. With the anticipated population growth, we need to be ready to respond to the growing healthcare needs and have space ready to recruit new physicians to this area, as well as retain the physicians and other health providers that we currently have. The family health team is of value to both new grad physicians and to the community. Primicare Family Health Team currently has the ability to bring on new physicians to our underserviced area. However, we lack the space to house them. As the Executive Director of Primicare, I can say quite honestly that time is of the essence for us. I do not want to see any missed opportunities on the recruitment front. The community has stated clearly that urgent care access is top priority to them, and we have no doubt that the community will get behind this initiative in many ways. The community hub, done properly, will enable this service to undergo a smooth transition and maintain good relations with its patient base and community members. What are the social determinants of health? At every stage of life, health is determined by complex interactions between social and economic factors, the physical environment, and individual behavior. These factors are referred to as the determinants of health. Our vision of a community hub is not limited to medical care, but also to include social service resources that assist our vulnerable populations, those who live in poverty, those with mental illness, those who are socially isolated, and to share those services across our communities. The community hub will provide an excellent demonstration of the benefits of partnership amongst organizations and the sharing of resources. It's an excellent model for future development. By partnering with other agencies and organizations whose services are currently provided outside of our area, the hub will attract service providers to have satellite sites to bring important services and programs to our community, which will provide access, again, for the more vulnerable members of our community. This community hub will be a one-stop shop for many. It will help with navigating our system and create better coordination among server, sorry, among service providers in serving clients. Our vision is of a beautiful, functional, multifaceted building, which will address the needs and issues of health and wellness in our community for many years to come. As previously stated, our community is growing. In planning a community health hub, we can begin to address those future needs now. We have the opportunity to bring together our communities, to resolve the healthcare fears that are currently in our community, and most importantly, to build and maintain stronger relationships between all partners of the community hub and the community members. And again, the most vulnerable people in our communities do not have access to many services that are offered outside of their community. We want to close that gap. Is this a big undertaking? Yes, it is. Is it necessary? Yes, it is. So what are our next steps as a task force? We plan to host a public forum to inform and engage our community members regarding the future of healthcare services in Paris. This is currently planned for January the 11th at 7:00 PM at the Paris Fairgrounds, and we would love for all of you to be there. We will hold an information night for all who have contacted us to express an interest in partnerships and collaboration. We will identify potential locations. And we will determine what are our sources of funding going to be. We're thinking 3P. We're thinking of raising funds through fundraising, through grants, community resources, our existing budgets, and private developers. We'd like to strike a community advisory group to work closely with us and provide an avenue of communication between the community and the planning committee. And then we'd like to form a planning group, which is not what we are currently, we are a task force. And our biggest goal is to obtain council support. So what do we require from council? At this point in time, we are asking for council to support our group as we move forward with the community health hub. We may need to call on the expertise of county staff for the completion of forms and funding applications, to assist in the selection of a project manager. We would like to leave this door open so that as we progress in the development of our hub, we can return to council should further need arise. We also feel that it is extremely important that the county has visibility as a partner in this endeavor. This would be achieved by a continued presence on our task force and future planning group, by the messaging by each of you to your constituents, and allowing the use of your logo, the county logo, along with all the others, on messaging to demonstrate that, the support which you provide to us. We will incur initial expenses such as hall rental, advertising, mailings, et cetera. We would like to ask council to assist us with startup funds to cover these initial And that can be determined, we can have a conversation about what that would be. And that brings me to the end of my presentation. We would like to thank you all for providing this with this special opportunity this evening, coming out for this. Happy to present this exciting, exciting initiative to you. We are happy to answer any questions that you may have. And Don would like to make a few comments as well, please.
Thank you, Cindy, for that presentation. Members of council, you recall that I was asked to come onto this committee, and it's been an eye-opening experience for me as a counselor, but mostly as a citizen of the community, and actually seeing how we as a community now have an opportunity to have a say in what's going on with this hub. And it's called a hub for a simple reason. We're trying to attract, as they have in Kitchener-Watari with the Langs, used to be the Langs Farm, they have in their facility, and some of you may have visited it, what an awesome facility that is. It has everything in there from doctors to fitness programs, to seniors programs, to blood clinics, to youth programs, you name it, it's there. Chiropractors, everybody in the medical field has, has an office there of some kind, and also some social service offices are in there as well. So it's drawing it all together, and in the business world, we call it a one-stop shop. So you can go in there, if you're young or old, and be able to do everything you need to do in one place. The Langs is a beautiful example of that. There's another one in Wellington-Guelph area, just read an article on it as well. We also met with the Special Advisor to Kathleen Nguyen, who came to our meeting and was very pleased that we're all working together because, in her experience, and exact words are, she's been to meetings in communities where every little group wanted to meet with her independently. We all came together as one, which is awesome. Everybody has the same focus and the same goal. We want to make sure that we have it all ready for the community today, but for 15 to 20 years down the road as well. So we know we have growth coming, let's get prepared now and be more proactive at it. We also know that it's, it's going to be taking a burden off of the emergency services. Right now, as you know, at Branford General Hospital, there is waits to get in there like any other hospital with urgent care, and this type of facility should cut down on that drastically as well, which is another big thing we want to do. And as we all know in our budgets, we're looking at more ambulances and things like that as well. So this will go hand in hand to help resolve some of those issues internally. So as you can see, it's, it's something that the community wants, it's something the community needs, and the partnering we're getting is fantastic. We have developers that are interested in our area to, to build a facility like this because, as I've been saying personally, we really don't need to own a building. That's not what we're good at. What we're good at is supplying a service to our clients, which is the community, and that's the key. So if there's any questions, Cindy and I'll try to answer them to the best of our ability. Thank you.
And members of council, I'd like to make a few remarks just before we go into the question period, which is so important. As you know, at the last, I believe, last meeting of council, because I was a member of the hub group that visited the Langs operation in Waterloo, I received, I received a bunch of these pamphlets and circulated them to the members of council so that you'd have the opportunity to look at that and get an idea of what's going on in that particular hub, which is very vast. Now, some of you might wonder why the name Paris appears over and over, and that's simply because the Willett Hospital, an urgent care center, is now in the town, in the former town, and may be replaced. And this is looking at what should replace it, what could and should be provided to the citizens. So it's outside of the county council responsibilities, of course, but we can participate and be a part. And the first meeting was called by Dave Levack, MPP, who called some of us together to discuss the matter and see if we were willing to, to form a group and get talking about this and get started, and that's exactly what happened. From that first launch, we had a meeting, and then we engaged a larger number of people from various aspects, and they were introduced to get started. So the initial start has, has been made. But you'll be pleased to know that Cindy did mention many other parts of the county. So it's a county-wide initiative, really, and she said that. So there are many aspects of this to get started, and I suspect there are many questions, and I hope there are because we learn from questions. So I'll start with Counsel Powell, who has a question.
Thank you, Your Honor, and through you to Cindy. Thank you for your presentation. I'm looking on page 11, the fourth paragraph, and you list a lot of wonderful things. I can remember when the Willett had an excellent physiotherapy department, very professional staff, and we had our own pallet of care, so the local people did not have to go into Branford. The family could visit 24/7, park on the street for free, and most of them knew our local Paris nurses. Now, all that subsequently was taken away. And so I hope this is not a, we're going around the wheel one more time, and then later somebody, whoever's going to say, "Sorry, we don't have the money, we're not going to go that route."
Thank you. I understand your comments, and I am aware of some of the history that has gone on with the Willett. I can speak to that from, from my perspective, and as the Executive Director of the Family Health Team, I appreciate the Willett and all that it's represented. Our, our place in the Willett is as a tenant, so we're not connected with BGH in terms of urgent care and the services they provide. And what I'm looking at is our team needs to grow. We're, we're in an enviable position. We're viewed by many other family health teams as being so fortunate because we're one of the few physician groups that can still add new physicians to its group, and we do need to do that. And we're looking at the population growth, and we have nowhere to grow in the Willett. We brought in a new physician recently in the summer, and he had to go and work in Burford. We wanted him in Paris, but we just didn't have the space in Paris. We, we can still recruit new physicians, and, and that's really key, and they will want to come to us because it's a boon to them to be in a family health team. So our family health team does reside in Paris, that's where we want to stay. So that's why my focus is, is Paris. When I'm thinking of a new home for us, it's Paris. I want new physicians, I want to expand my other allied health professionals that we have. You know, with more physicians, we have a better ability to get more nurses, nurse practitioners, and that's all going to take space. So my interest is not so much in, "Let's get out of the Willett," it, it's not serving our needs, but it's, "Let's look forward, we need to be able to grow, and where can we do that?" At the same time, I know that urgent care is looking at alternatives, and it seemed like a good opportunity to, "Well, if we're looking and you're looking, let's keep everything in Paris." The Paris community wants everything in Paris, in terms of everything. I'm talking about primary care, acute care, not all of the other programs, but let's, let's do this together and let's work together." And we've done very well so far, and no decision has been made at this point in time where this community hub would be. There's many different options that we have. Will it be a refurbished building that currently exists? We don't know. Will it be a brand-new build? Will there be a developer come out and offer to do this for us? We're not quite there yet, but we will get there. But our, our options are open. We're, we're willing to take a look at all options to us. Does that help answer your question?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought Counsel Powell was going to touch on this when he mentioned page 11 and paragraph number four. I guess I was a little taken back by this last night when I read this, as I was watching the Packers beat Seattle. So had to get that in. Anyhow, my point is, I was a little upset the way the communities were listed. I'd rather see it read, "The healthcare in Paris, serving all communities in the county of Brant." Labeling communities and leaving out a bunch of communities, especially down in Ward 5, can leave a, I hate this old stigma thing, but it labels things, and I'd rather see it, "All communities." To me, that's a very important issue. I support your endeavor, and go from there.
Thank you very much for that comment. I actually had that comment made to me as well by a member of my task force saying, "You've done this wrong, you need to include it this way." And I, I did rework my presentation. I will admit to you that I am not a local, I am learning the local ways and trying very hard to keep it straight. I apologize for that, but, but I have people close to me that are keeping me on the straight and narrow and making sure that I'm presenting it right.
Counselor Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I totally agree, it, it is something that we absolutely need countywide. Couple things. You talk about the January 11th public forum. Might I suggest, and maybe just my own opinion here, but I feel this is important enough to potentially have two public forums? Because, you know, I've had a lot of comments about, you know, with the, you know, "Oh, the Willett's closing and we're losing this." And I'm trying to explain to people, "No, we're not going to lose our urgent care, you know, we're, we're going to have it," you know. But I don't think it's fair to have just one meeting, because not everybody can make one meeting. So I'm thinking if you had a couple of them, that may suit things better. And another thing, I just, I'm just going to pick on something that you said there when you were, when you were talking through, that, you know, you're talking about, you know, new doctors and nurses and stuff like that, and you made the point that they will want to come to us. And, and I think that's the, the most important thing right now. If you take, you know, say, young doctors that are starting out, and, and don't get me wrong, you know, the Willett is sacred to my heart too, but the reality of it is, they're looking at a state-of-the-art facility with all the bells and whistles and all that kind of stuff. So I, I'm absolutely in, in favor of what's going on here, and, and I think it's, it's about time. And, and like I say, just a couple of things, just with a couple of, couple of these meetings, and just the fact that, yeah, we need to make it. So, you know, they're banging at our door, and that, I think we can get there.
And Counselor Pierce, that's a good point, and we will monitor that. If we, we believe that we will need two meetings, we will absolutely do that, because we want to make it clear in everybody's mind, crystal clear, on what this committee is going to do, what our goal is. And one thing I want to, I want to mention to you is, in our initial meetings, it was made clear to us by our MPP, Dave Levack, "It will stay in the community." That was his words verbatim. "It will stay in the community." No, it will not be shutting down, because you cannot not have healthcare in the community. As far as the, the use of county time and staff, it'll be minimum, if any at all, because Mr. Levack's office has said that they will help us in the granting process through his office to be able to get the grant forms filled out properly. And the way the Liberal Government's going right now, they need some good stories right now to help them get over a few hurdles that they need to get over. So I'm sure this is near and dear to their hearts, as they've proven most recently with programs like this. So we want to be, we want to be one of the first in line to go for this. Will it be a 3P? Will it be private? Will it be public-owned? That's yet to be determined, but there are a lot of players out there who are very interested in our community.
Counselor Powell.
Yeah, if I may through you to the presenter, I couldn't agree more that I think you need to work on your messaging, because I don't think the best place for this building is in Paris. But that's a whole side issue, we'll have to see where it comes out, because I think it'll be more accessible in a different location than where the current facility is, or even in the former geographic town of Paris. So I would drop that for messaging and say, "This is to serve the county of Brant, Six Nations, and city of Branford, period." I thought it was interesting that in your slide with the supporters, that the county of Brant was not listed on that, so I'd fix that, too.
It is. Oh.
No, it is not.
You may have the old slide.
Well, that's what I got in my package, so. And then, and, and so messaging's really important. I mean, we just had that a few months ago where someone from a large health center was here saying that the Willett was not going to close, and then we read it in the paper a couple of weeks later that it was closing. And, and we all agree that that is not the way it's going to be, and yet messaging is critical. And so I don't think I would be talking about a health center in Paris, because it may not be in Paris. And, and then I think you'll lose traction very quickly if you communicate that wrong. And so while I'm very supportive of having something like this, I think just be very careful on messaging.
And you're correct, Counselor. I mean, we know that with the growth pattern, there has to be give and take in where it's going to be located, for sure. It's where it's going to be best serving the community. Knowing, knowing full well, we get a lot of people from the Cambridge area, the Woodstock area, that come down this way for urgent care, Air Ontario. So there are other communities that, that come and into our urgent care system. So it's not just Paris, it's not just our surrounding area, it's other communities that come here as well. So yes, finding out where the best location is, is going to be key.
Sorry, I would just like to say again that as the family health team, we are a Paris family health team. So if we're looking for a new home, it can be on the edge of Paris, but we're a Paris family health team with satellite sites, so we would be looking within Paris.
Well, it sounds good to be on the edge of anything. So you're saying that it's located in the county of Brant. Counselor Chambers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll begin by saying I think it's a, a great initiative that's being carried out here, but I do have a couple of comments that I think you can take them for what they're worth. My first comment is, you're calling your, the Community Health Hub, and the connotation of a hub is a building. I would submit that the, what it should be called is a Community Health Wheel, because the important components of this whole thing are the partners that make the wheel that go into the hub. And you have to really have a buy-in of the wheel to make the hub effective. It's not going to be a hub unless you have the wheel. It's not going to be a hub unless you have the wheel. So having said that, the wheel with the components and the partners, if you will, what you have to be careful of, I think, is that you don't take resources from other hubs and wheels that may or may not be within the county. For example, Don keeps referring to our MP, Dave Levack. My MP is not Dave Levack. It's Ernie Hardeman.
Oh, exactly.
People where I live go not to Paris hospitals, they go to Woodstock.
That's correct.
If it is a matter of funding these things, then the last thing you want to be, have the impression that the funds are being taken away from this wheel and hub and going to that wheel and hub. I don't think that it is, but that connotation can be detrimental in how this is perceived. So I guess my suggestion is, don't call yourself a hub. Call yourself a wheel. We all recognize it has to be a building, but what's in the building is what's important. There's buildings everywhere. It's who goes into the buildings that are important. And you have to make sure that you're not draining the system for everybody by, I was going to say feathering your nest, but that's an ugly connotation, but by taking resources that may be best put toward the whole rather than components of the whole.
Thank you. So the community health hub, I'll tell you the reason why we chose that. And that's the name that we...
We all like it.
Exactly. That's, um, community health hub. We needed to have a name of our task force. And there's a mandate by the Ministry of Health to form community hubs. Ours would be a health hub. But we knew that we wanted to get in front of the Ministry of Health, and this is something that they're promoting and wanting us to develop in our communities. So we're using their terminology, I guess, so they look upon us more favorably. But in the end, when the building is done, many things will come into the decision of what this place is actually going to be called. For now, it's just a community hub. Another one of our mandates is sharing resources. It's really big. So what the ministry is after us to do, they don't want us to be holding a diabetic education clinic, Branford Hospital to be holding a diabetic education clinic, and Woodstock. They want us to get together. So can your diabetic education clinic also serve the family health team and also serve a doctor group in Branford? And can the Paris location maybe house the mental health here and have it all here instead of there? So we're looking at ways to share resources, to reduce the spending by sharing resources. So I don't have a fear of depleting somebody else's resources or taking away from somebody else. I see it, this, it'll start, this microcosm will start here, and it will start in other communities. And you will see this grow, so that we're reaching out to other organizations. Well, what do you have? What can we share? Some of our partners have come on board with us specifically so they can share the programs that they have right here in Paris. So I can't see it being detrimental at this point in time, but I certainly respect your view about that. Thank you.
And I'll conclude by saying, I drive a vehicle that has 18 wheels, and it always works best if the wheels are working in the same direction. And a lot can be accomplished if everybody's working together as wheels to the whole vehicle.
Absolutely. Even if there are 18 of them. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Eddie, Mayor Eddie. Through you to the presenters. A couple of things. I'll continue on the wheel analogy, because I want to go back to the wheel that Counselor Powell brought up, you know, where this wheel goes around over time. And I look at something like St. Joe's, and I have relatives, some dead, some still living, who donated to that, right? Ah, here's a community hospital, and they all give money. And then a few decades go on, and a provincial government comes along and shuts it down. And I know for the Willet, a lot of community members have given money to that over time to build this, to build that. And then now we've got a provincial government, or, you know, a higher authority body, governing body, come along and say, "We're going to shut that down." So I don't want to see that. And thank you, Don, for sharing what MPP, Dave Levack, said about, "This is going to be a community forever." But take that with a grain of salt, because we just, we can't predict the future. But having said that, I got two actual questions here. One is, have you approached the LIN and discussed this? And do you see them as a funding source? Or what role do you see the LIN? And maybe that's too early to ask. And the second question, and I think you kind of touched on it, but how do you prevent that duplication of services? And like I say, I know we touched on it, but I look at, say, Grand River Health, Grand River Community Health Center, and they do a lot of things that, you know, you're looking at, so... But I think, we'll leave that duplication of services, because I think you're aware of that. But just talk to me about the LIN, if you've approached them or not. What role do you see for them?
I've just realized, when you asked about the LIN, I left them off my list of who we are. We do have Steve Isaac from the, from LIN 4.
I haven't seen him.
No, he's not on there. I'm very sorry. I omitted him from our list. He hasn't made all meetings. He's been to a few. He was certainly at the one with Karen Petrie, who's a special advisor to Kathleen Winn, and sat at that, and he supports us. But there's little that they do at this point, because we're in this stage. We're not moving forward yet. We're sort of putting our pieces together and presenting. But yes, the LIN absolutely knows about it.
Through you to Cindy again. On page 12, you're talking about facility. Now, a few years back, a site was picked out behind the Brant County Fire Admin Building. Plans were drawn up for the building. A lot of different medical services were going to be in there. And then somebody, or something up the chain, canceled it all out, and it never happened.
And you're right, Counselor Powell. And what's different about this is, it's a different model. Totally different model in the sense of, it's a wheel model or a hub model. It's going to have more to it than what that was offering. We're bringing all the partners to the table, not ones that are picking and choosing whatever they want. And the big difference is, we have a lot of interest in this, whether it's a 3P, whether it's publicly owned or privately owned. We have a lot of interest in this. We have developers that are interested in building the whole thing, but not only that, they're saying, "We'll put in a seniors residence." You know, three- or four-story seniors residence. Well, what are we short of in our communities? Seniors residence. So they see the needs.
Ironically, it's the same government in power. When we went through this whole nine yards in the past, and it's still the same government in power, and we've seen their record on how they've covered health in the province so far, and you know the whole list of things. So, you know, I guess I'm just a little more suspicious than some people.
Well, and you're right, and I would agree. They have put some in place, like Lang's in Kitchener-Waterloo area, the one in Wellington-Guelph area is now up and running. So we're hoping that it'll continue to keep driving, because what you're seeing in this one that you didn't see in the other one, is a lot more community-private input. And that's what's driving it. So when you put your neck out there and say they want more community and private input, you're in the public eye bigger now. So it's a real driving force to move this forward. And of course, like I say, if you can get someone who's interested, and I'm not saying this is going to happen, but if you've got people that are interested in adding on to that, such as seniors' residents or care residencies, that even adds to it even more. That just broadens the scope for the communities.
And I'd just like to add just a little bit more. I am aware of the previous attempt to build on Curtis Ave. And it was all done by the time I stepped into this position. I see that as more, even though there was a partnership, it was more of a private venture, whereas this is really community-oriented, as Don had said, and the people that we're trying to bring into it. It's going to be robust. It's not dependent on one organization is going to make or break it. It's a whole conglomerate of different organizations, different groups, partnerships and collaboration. So I see this as an entirely different animal than the build that we were going to do on Curtis Ave several years ago.
And also, Counselor Powell, when you see the private communities, such as a few of the developers, saying it's about time that everybody had their input on something like this, you know they're listening.
One last question and a comment. On page 13, you talk about fundraising. I know it's a touchy issue, but do you start with the million-plus that was in the Willet Foundation?
Oh, I'll answer that. That hasn't even come up yet, Counselor Powell. That's something that has to be thrown on the table and looked at, negotiated, or whatever. What we're looking at right now really is to see who wants to be part of it, to see who wants to help drive this whole process. But as far as fundraising and things like that, there may be limited fundraising needed to be done, because if you go into a 3P, you'll have somebody that'll develop it, build it, and run it, and all you're doing is occupying the building. So really, there's three ways of looking at it. So we have to find the model that's going to work best for us, and then we start looking at that. Because you don't go into anything for fundraising unless you have something solid in your hand that you can go to the community with. Because the community are the ones that are going to back you. Okay? They're the ones that are going to force the hand. So if you have something solid that you can go to the community with, that's the time to do it. But we're not at that stage yet. The stage we're at right now is, what do we need? How do we put it together? And do we use the private sector, or do we go 3P with partners? So that's where we're at right now.
And the comment, it's interesting, on the Brant General Board, there are no politicians from the city or from the county after all these years, and they talk about being open and transparent. Now, I might be wrong, but I don't think they even take delegations at their board meetings.
We can't pass comment on that. That's not our forte. That's not what we're here for.
That's not what this is.
And I don't have an answer for it, nor does Cindy, so we don't know.
Would you, could I add one little thing?
Yes.
Don had made reference to the Wellington-Dufferin-Guelph. And I think there was an article in Municipal World that you and I were looking at, so it might be interesting if you look at it. And at the bottom, I think it was Counselor Pierce that brought it up, talking about physician recruitment and that kind of thing. And one of the things they said was, having this facility there, it's quite attractive to the young doctors coming in, and it's really helped them with their recruitment, so...
Yes, and what you're looking at in some developments like that is, you'll have maybe a big-name pharmaceutical company, I don't know, Shoppers or somebody in your area. It's not going to be a big-box location, but what it is going to do is service the people for that area. Okay? For the whole county, if need be. So you're going to be putting it into play that's going to last a long time. You don't want to be proactive in the sense it's going to be good for two to five years, when you know your growth patterns are going to be bigger. So you put it into play that you can either expand, or you put it into play that you have the space available. I know the Langs is talking about expanding now, correct, Cindy?
They started expanding as soon as they were done building. They were already too tight. They're on their second expansion.
And they were so, they were so new and green at this from a provincial standpoint, that they were making changes on the fly, which tells you how new the process is for this type of thing. So we're coming in at a really good time here to develop something along the lines. And with the input from everybody, it's been really, really good. You know, there's never been really any negativity on this. It's about how do we make it work as a team? How do we motivate it and move it forward? And also, the big piece of this puzzle is keeping the community informed on what's happening. And that's the next step. Will we have all the answers? Absolutely not. We don't pretend to. What we want to do is show the community where we are, and then get some more feedback, and feed on that feedback, and make the changes as required, or develop something as it's required for the program. But keeping in mind, it's all about health and healthcare. It's not always about the hospital itself, but there's a lot of things that go on outside the hospital that don't need to be in the hospital, so...
Can I just...
Sure.
I'd just like to finish off with just a couple of more comments. Paul, you mentioned physicians, and a new building being very attractive to new physicians. I do have to agree with that. And we do have some physicians in our family health team that have been practicing for a number of years, and I don't anticipate they're going to go on indefinitely. There will be a turnover of physicians. So not only recruiting new physicians to our current group, but how do we replace physicians when they want to move on? And that's really key. It's a difficult thing to do. You need to make it as appetizing as possible. And a new office with space, adequate space for patients and their staff and whatnot, goes a long way with a new physician. But this isn't all about physicians. This is about services. From my point of view, yes, I'm all about the physicians. But this community hub that we're talking about, I'd like to give you an example of what could happen. So talking about partnerships. Earlier this year, we partnered with CMHA, Canadian Mental Health Association. There was a really big problem with patients getting in to see them. Patients from Paris, first of all, the people that use those services quite often don't have the means to get to Branford for an appointment. If they can get to Branford for that appointment, they're waiting a year to get it. Now, I think their wait time has improved somewhat. So we saw a need there. So we talked to Mike Bennen, the executive director from CMHA, and we partnered with him. And what we do now is, we, since February the 8th, we provide an office to them three days a week. It's a really nice office. It's got a couch and chairs and a desk, and we provide that to them. We provide them with their office supplies. They bring their computer. They have a staff who works in our building three days a week. She lives in Paris, which is really nice. Our patients, our community members, this is not just about our patients. Our community members are now getting in to see CMHA. They're getting the help that they need within one to two weeks of a referral. And that is huge for our community. And that's the type of thing that we're talking about. When we have patients that have to travel to Branford, if they can get to Branford, for mental health services, for, in many services. What about women in our community who suffer from domestic abuse? And where do they go in our community? There's a nice place in Branford that can reach out and can help them. They want to be a part of this. I want this in Paris. I want this available for our community members. So it's not just about the physicians. It's not just about urgent care. It's about the total services, and it's not just medical care. It's social services, exactly. It's going to help the vulnerable in our society, and that's how you measure the good of a society, is how they look after their vulnerable. So I just wanted to comment that, yes, in terms of a new building, the physicians would love it, but it's not just all about the physicians. It's about the services we're talking about as a whole. Thank you.
And as we go along in the process, it's my responsibility, and I will come back to council and give them updates on where we are, what we're doing, what our next steps are, when that new committee's developed, who's on the committee and how it's going to go forward. It's important that we, as counselors, are up to speed on what's going on with something of this size. So it's got to be transparent and crystal clear on what we're doing. We'll have the first community meeting. We'll probably have a second, and then go from there on the feedback that we get. And we'll just keep going at it. I mean, it's our responsibility now, as community people, to keep this going. And we need to keep this going, because it's part of our community. Thank you, everyone.
Was there any other question? Does any of your members, any one of your members feel that they need to make a statement or add some piece of information to your presentation?
Thank you. Thank you for that opportunity, and let's ask them. Would any of our task force members like to come up and add anything that I may have missed in my presentation? Dr. McDonald? You've got five minutes.
It's because we haven't been a lot of time left, Dr. McDonald, that I thought I should call on you, because we don't want to waste the...
Well, you all, you know very well about the bookend approach, right? Meetings end at noon hour, and they tend to end, don't they? But I won't be very long, because I thought this was a huge opportunity, and I really am delighted that you're allowing us to speak to you and inform you about the current version of how to deliver health... of how to deliver healthcare in communities. Don't ever forget what Cindy said, it is about the services in the communities, not just Paris, but the county. This is about a place where we can talk about the services that your constituents actually need and use, and so they don't all have to go into the city. So they can actually stay close to home. This is about trying to deliver the words and the actions about patient first. This is about, yes, staying in Paris, if I'm in Paris, I'm afraid I am not going to move out of Paris. But this is not about, this is about me caring about the services to patients in Burford, the new doc is there, in St. George, we want to continue with St. George to be recruiting, and other locations. And Air is included, it goes beyond boundaries. It's not just a county boundary. The hub or the wheel is not bounded by a county designation. So we're going to be partnering with Woodstock, with Kitchener-Waterloo, we already do, we partner with, we have some similar patients in Langs. So this is about working together, not being cut out in a cookie-cutter approach of the municipalities in Ontario so far. It's about working together. But the most important message, which may be gone to get up tonight, this is a renewed opportunity for a decision-making body, Lake County Council, to be upfront and in the mix of making important decisions for your constituents. This is an opportunity you haven't had for a very long time. Originally, when the community owned the hospital, the community built the hospital, the constituents did this for themselves and for you. Then, the Hospital Act came in, and the community, the constituencies, and the decision-making body of the County Council gave that to the hospital corporation. And then the story moves on from there. So you now have a new opportunity to get to the grassroots of your constituency as a decision-making partner, and make this come alive for your constituency outside of the history of the hospital. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. McDonald. You're always like the cream in our coffee when you get up to speak. Thank you very much. You always bring in some additional items of information, which are very important. And indeed, the hospital served a much greater area than the old town of Paris, for sure. It certainly did, always has. Thank you very much. If any final question, I guess they've sat down, but they'll still answer. Thank you very much for your presentation, the information you've given, and indeed, the journey that you've started out on, and I know you'll be proceeding in several ways. Members of council, you've heard the presentation, you've heard the views of the committee. Is there any action you would like to take at this time? I believe the one request does, the second one, on page 13, does affect council somewhat, and I don't know whether it needs an action by council or not. So whether you wish to receive it for information, or have the opportunity to respond in some way, and think of other items that you might want to include, or have the committee pursue, or at least acknowledge and register with them. So with that, Councillor Chambers, please.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps I'll craft a resolution, and the clerk can modify it, and members of council can chirp in.
Thank you.
I'll move that the presentation be received, and that council support the concept of a community hub.
Concept.
In brackets, wheel.
You'll have that registered.
In principle, and request further information regarding, there was a request for small funding for, I forget exactly what the wording was, but that has to be in pretty quick, because we're finalizing our budget on Wednesday. So that the request be expected with regard to our 2017 budget. And that's an invitation to submit a request, I guess is what it is.
Completed, thank you. There is a mover. Is there a second or for that? Councillor Carley, thank you. Now, would you be able to repeat that, rather, so that we can then process it?
That the presentation be received, and that council support the concept of a community hub in principle, and request further information regarding any asks that need to be considered for the 2017 budget.
Does that cover it, Councillor?
All except for the bracket.
I'm sorry, bracket.
Moved and seconded. Is there anyone, any member of council wishes to speak to the proposed resolution at this time? Anyone? If not, all in favor? Oppose? Carry? And thank you, on behalf of council, for your extremely important presentation. Councillor Carley.
Your worship, I would just like to say thank you to all my colleagues on council for their support and your support as well. It hasn't been easy getting to this point so far, to bring all the members to table to discuss this opportunity, and I assure you, for Wednesday night's meeting, I will have a answer to that monetary situation for the budget meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. And I believe that concludes our agenda for this meeting, and we will, Councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to clarify something for the record here, and I'm okay with it myself, but I just want to make sure there's no conflict of interest with Councillor Carley seconding that motion, because he was part of the delegation.
Oh.
I just, I just, I don't have an issue with it, but I'm just worried about optics or anything like that. I just want to make sure that we're all, because he was part of that delegation that made the presentation, are we good with that?
I have, I have no problem with it.
Nor do I, I just want to just confirm.
The fact that he was part of the delegation. Trying to think, we've had that on other occasions, I expect so.
There's nothing I can think of that that would be a problem with.
Okay, perfect. No, I just, I just wanted to, I just, I'm all good with it, but I just want to make sure that once it's all signed and sealed, we're good to go.
Thank you. And Councillor Weave has joined us and heard some of the details of this, so thank you very much, and I will adjourn this special council meeting, and appreciate what has transpired.